You have entered the meeting as a panelist. Attendees can now hear you speak.
That's already done.
Okay, so we're on.
Is that the planning commission mascot?
I don't know.
It could be.
Okay, I need a link because I've never put in a password. Yeah, because I've never set up a password. And usually I just put in my email and then it says, do you want to join the meeting?
Isn't that the?
Oh, got it. Right, right, right.
Yeah, you know, I can just be listening. That's okay. The screen is so small.
Okay.
Yeah. And I can be watching the screens.
Yeah, it's not a long meeting.
That's okay. Do here middle one.
Participant ID.
Through here.
Okay, well, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Too much headache, too much confusion.
Join a meeting, that's it. Meeting ID, personal link, name, personal link. Meeting ID.
By the way, we're live if you guys are passing passwords out, so I don't know how broadly everybody can hear that stuff.
Okay. Okay, I don't have any picture up on my webinar registration thing. It should say. Okay. Ah, register. There. Oh, man. Click this URL to join. Okay. Open Zoom. Okay, this looks familiar now. Okay. This host has another meeting in progress.
Excuse me, Chair Eglin, I don't think you need to log on to anything.
Oh, perfect.
You would just conduct the meeting as you would normally. And staff will coordinate the other participants as necessary.
Perfect. Okay. Then, let's see, it's 6:05. The planning commission is called to order. Commissioner Gibson, would you care to do the honors?
The leaders in the flag salute?
Yes, sir.
Is that? Okay. If you can, I don't know if you can see my flag in the background here. Ready salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job. Is there any public comment? Oh, roll call, sorry, sorry. Anita?
All in attendance.
Thank you. Planning department announcements, anyone?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before we get into department announcements, maybe we can just speak, we can have Dulce and/or Ariel speak to some of the meeting conventions tonight with the Zoom and how to participate. We do see that we have a number of participants right now, but just for those that are tuning in. So please, if we could introduce that before department announcements.
Certainly.
Okay, thank you, Valerie. So, members of the public are still able to view the meeting via CMAP and it's being broadcast through our YouTube video. The link is actually posted on the agenda. In addition to that, written comment and email comment was welcome to be sent prior to the meeting. If you are attending via Zoom, you may participate, or when it's public comment, on the bottom of the screen, there's a hand, raise your hand icon. You can click on that and it will alert the host that you want, you wish to make a comment. In addition, if you are attending through the phone, you can dial star, or hit star nine on your device. And that also raises a hand and it alerts the host that you want to make a comment. We are participating in following public comment guidelines. You will be given three minutes. And you'll be notified that the host has unmuted you and you will state your first and last name for the record. And then here, we'll run the clock for you. And that's it for Zoom edicits 101. Thank you.
There we go, unmute. So, thank you, Madam Chair. We do have a full quorum in attendance. Thank you, commissioners. I do have a few department announcements, just briefly. I just wanted to express the department's appreciation and thanks for the professional services of several, several people. Michael Kelly in getting the planning commission packet produced and distributed electronically. Countywide, also our thanks to Dulce Alonso, Jennifer Frichette, and Ariel Goodspeed to navigate the videos and the electronics interactions this evening. Thank you very much. And Anita Gutierrez, thank you for your presence in the chambers operating those meeting controls. So, tonight, public, we will have commissioners and planners both present in the chambers as well as presenting from home or remote locations. And applicants and San Benito citizens will also be involved remotely. So we may have a few bumps and quirks as we move along, but we hope that all parties will show a little patience as we move forward. So, thank you with that. And Chair, I think this planner, Ariel Goodspeed, had just something to say a little bit before moving on to public comment. Is that true, Ariel?
We already went over the Zoom, so we are.
Okay, so I think at this point, Madam Chair, it's time for public comment.
Yes, thank you. Public comment, is there anyone who would care to, has a speaker card?
If you're attending and you wish to make a public comment, please dial star nine now if you're on your device or raise your hand. And this is to discuss any matters not on the agenda. I see none.
We see none. Shall we go to approve consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve and second, the second, the second amendment, RR? Approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda. Nice to come back.
So, sorry, is that Robert and?
Gibson.
Gibson and Navarro or?
Oh, yes.
Gibson.
Yeah, that's why we need to see the pictures. There we go. Perfect, perfect. Can't just keep talking to the air out here. Okay. Motion approved. Okay. Acknowledgment of public hearing and all of that is included, sorry.
Are we going to call for a vote on that, Valerie?
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Moved, so moved and passed. Adoption of action minutes, that's all of it. Going to the regular agenda. We will open the public hearing of. Where's our new thing?
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. There's three items for discussion and consideration by the planning commission this evening. The first being a use permit presented by Assistant Planner Ariel Goodspeed for a cellular tower in Mid County.
There we go.
The second being a use permit for a winery and wine tasting facility off Siena Gavro. And then we're also going to have a presentation from our, the county's housing coordinator. So with that, I believe Planner Ariel Goodspeed is ready to give her presentation.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Madam Chair and fellow commissioners. My name is Ariel Goodspeed. I am Assistant Planner here with the county. And today I'll be presenting county file number PLN 190052, use permit for telecommunications facility located out at 32005 Airline Highway in Pisens. So, it's located about 30 miles south of Hollister. It's east of Highway 25 and north of Pinnacle National Park. And access to the property is off of Highway 25. This is site plan of the proposed facility laid over a Google Earth. As you can see, it's located near the rear end of the parcel. The parcel's about 203 acres. And currently, there are no existing structures on the parcel that the telecommunications facility will be at. So today, I'm just, I'm going to go over the project description, the visual implementations of site development, the land use consistency to the general plan and zoning. Their SEQA determination and condition that is needing discussion and staff's recommendation. So, a little bit about what's being proposed at the project site. It's going to be an unmanned telecommunications facility, approximately 30 by 40 lease area. There's going to be 12 antennas and 24 remote radio heads installed on a 100-foot tall monopole. There's going to be an eight-foot by eight-foot by 10-foot high modular building walking communication equipment closet with a backup generator. In addition, staff would like to point out that on the 100-foot monopole, there is also going to be two co-locations underneath as illustrated in the photo. So, we wanted to show you some photo simulations of the project. The first on the left is a view from Highway 25 looking north at the site. And the view on the right is Highway 25 looking northeast at the site. As you can see in the visual simulations, it is a good distance out there. And even though it is a 100-foot monopole, it is not going to be easily noticeable when driving along Highway 25. And again, here on the left is a view from Highway 146 looking northeast at the site. And then at the site location, looking northwest, some before and afters. So, just reviewing, it does hit multiple items for land use consistency within the general plan for agricultural destination. And then also for telecommunications. And the one thing I did want to express here was that the new addition of a telecommunications service is in a remote area. And the next closest telecommunications facility is a little over 24 miles away. And the addition of this facility would improve wireless coverage to the area and it'd also increase network capacity. And it also is consistent with zoning. For SEQA determination, we found the project to be categorically exempt, section 15303D, new construction or conversion of small structure exemptions. Specifically, water main sewage, electrical, gas, and other utility extensions, including the street improvements of a reasonable length to serve such construction. The one item that is needing some discussion today, staff would like to open up the discussion to the applicant and the fire marshal with complying with condition number 20 in the resolution. Condition number 20 has to do with water availability for the purpose of meeting fire safety standards applicable to state responsibility, area lands, and otherwise referred to as high fire severity area. I am going to be having our fire chief, Charlie Bedola, come up to speak to this matter.
Hi, I'm Charlie Bedola. I'm the fire marshal for San Benito County, City Hollister and San Juan Batista. Initially, when we had went and discussed this project, they had took me out to the site. We did evaluate the site. They did mention to me, hey, what are the needs that you have? We gave them out our needs. The big thing that we did ask for was a repeater. And the repeater would have improved the radio capabilities for hopefully police and fire. And in order to work with that with parks and everyone else, to increase it because right when you get out to that area, it's a dead zone. There's no communication and we were trying to improve the infrastructure. Later on through that, they ended up telling us, we're not going to do that, we're never going to do that. So, that's out of the question. So, they asked me to request this, so I was like, okay, so we've got to meet all the other requirements. In addition, they also let me know at a previous project that a ranch owner had made them pave the entire roadway up to a facility. I was like, okay, well, that's not what we're going to do. We just want to have accessible fire access road, 20 feet accessible with turnout since it is a long ways up. In addition to that, I did let them know that, hey, we're going to need you to improve fire safety that's out there. Because as we go and we come along, you know, we try to improve it as we go along. Right now, there is no water out there. So, this is a chance to get us to get some sort of fire protection that's out there. And the reason is they're bringing electrical down into the, into this ranch area where it's in a high fire severity zone. So, we want to do a couple of things. We want to improve some water for firefighting activities, plus they're bringing in electrical into this high fire severity zone too. I'm not asking to bring a fire, a lot of pumps, a lot of water and fire hydrants up on the top of the hill. I was asking for one tank. One tank that we usually know, use for a normal house, which is 5,000 gallons. The resident currently has 7,500 gallons. Alls I asked was for an additional tank. It's, we don't want to deplete the residence 7,500 gallons. We want to be able to at least give them a fighting chance because if it gets going over there, it's going to take us a while to get there. And we're going to need as much water as we can to at least start fighting the fire also. So, we want to be able to protect, protect the residents that are there, protect the ranch, and protect their livelihood, which is if they have cattle or anything else. And in addition, to protect the infrastructure from getting damaged out there. So, alls I'm really asking is update your address so it's visible. Update the gate because it's going to have to be accessible. They have an automatic gate, but it was kind of iffy. So, we said update the gate to make sure that it is working and the proper width with that. In that gate, they're going to have to install a Knox box key switch. That way, we come on out there and then we just hit a switch. Any department throughout the state will be able to access it because they have the county Knox box key. Just one tank that's accessible with one fire hydrant in addition to the 7,500 gallons of the, what the residence has. And if we need to place it somewhere else to make it accessible, they could run it off of there to another place. But at least we have some water that's, we get some decent water pumped out of the hydrant if needed. That was it. I did, I did make contact with Cal Fire and they said, yeah, per public resource code 4290, yeah, they do have to install their roads. They do have to have water. They do have to have all this infrastructure in there. One thing that I thought was odd is they did say, hey, did you get your SEQA report? So, they didn't say anything about being exempt for SEQA. And we could still hold off. And I did make contact with a couple of battalion chiefs, Jonathan Pangborn, who's in charge of that. He goes, I know that area very well. I don't know about this project at all right now. It should have came across my board. I was like, okay. And I talked with a battalion chief that's in charge for Cal Fire through there. And they all agreed, yeah, that's the minimum standards that we should have to be able to do that. These minimum standards, even though it's not a residence, it's still commercial industrial infrastructure that needs to be protected in the area. This is nothing out of the ordinary. We had the solar farms that went up there. Down in South County also, we had them put in one tank with one fire hydrant. And I have pictures of exactly what they did, plus the Knox key switch. So, we're not asking for anything extraordinary or above and beyond than just the bare bones minimum to pursue with this project.
Very good. And we've got the staff presentation, applicant comment.
Let me try this. Do you get any feedback? Everyone can hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. So, hello there. My name is Sarah King. I am here representing New Senior Wireless EVA AT&amp;T Mobility, the applicant. There's a couple of items I want to address. The first is, the third, I apologize, Charlie, the chief. I did have discussions about putting a repeater on the tower with him and not myself personally accountable to this. We did not say an absolute no. What we did say is AT&amp;T understands that installing a project like this requires negotiating with property owner and getting successful permits. And there are a lot of moving parts within that. It's difficult to make a project successful to begin with and some of them do fail. And so, what we told them was that we would like to go ahead and get the original lease space with property owner. If the permit's completed, then we could open negotiations with the fire department for adding the repeaters. And part of that is just because when you're negotiating with two entities versus one, it obviously adds additional complications to what is an already complicated project. So, just wanted to clear that point up. The second is, as you guys know, is AT&amp;T is agreeable with all the conditions except one. And that is condition number 20, fire protection and water supply and fire hydrant valve. After some back and forth with Charlie and via Ariel as the planning staff as a liaison, the fire, Charlie stated, we can adhere to this condition by supplying instead of a hydrant, a 5,000-gallon water tank near the site. We appreciate that he was flexible about this and he was working with us on it. He cited county code section 0105.3, which states that for development of structures totaling less than 3,000 square feet on a single parcel, the minimum fire protection water supply shall be 5,000 gallons. However, he failed to apply to the statement of previous section 0105.1, water systems, which states the provisions of this condition shall apply when new parcels are approved by a local jurisdiction. Because AT&amp;T is not modifying or applying for a new parcel, the section of code does not apply to our application or project. And AT&amp;T should not be expected to meet this burdened requirement. The understanding this code section only applies in the case of a new or modification to a parcel is also reiterated, reiterated in county code section 23.27.001 application, which reads, "The access and water systems required by the provisions of this chapter shall apply when new parcels are approved by a local jurisdiction." Section 23.7005, further along in the portion of this county code under the fire protection supply for water systems, indicates that these code requirements are for residential structures and does not contain a section containing requirements for non-residential structures. Given AT&amp;T is installing a commercial unmanned non-residential structure that is not creating or modifying a parcel boundary in any way, AT&amp;T would like to argue that the two sections of code used to create this condition 20 are being inappropriately applied to our project. It may be helpful to note, AT&amp;T is installing a metal tower, which is not flammable, as well as a firewall-rated solid concrete equipment cabinet, which is specifically designed to ensure that should a fire start within it, the structure will not rupture if the fire would remain contained inside. Our generator has a dual-lined gas tank and monitoring to ensure that leaks are prevented and that no malfunction leads to a fire risk. In addition, AT&amp;T is not in the business of supplying water, but is a telecommunications provider. And we feel this demand to supply significant volumes of water is a And we feel this demand to supply significant volumes of water is expecting our company to provide services outside our logical nexus. Our structure does not create the need for additional fire protection in this region, and therefore should not be required to supply means for a need we are not creating. In fact, this tower is specifically being placed to improve first net emergency services, to this area so that should a fire occur in this region, that communication can be maintained and fire or other emergency services would be significantly improved. We would ask that this condition be struck from the list of conditions and the approval moved forward without it. We are also prepared to consider an alternative condition that this needs to be, discussed and resolved with, the fire marshal, AT&amp;T and the county council and cell size factory. Means of supplying fire protection can be established.
Okay, so, um, I'd highly advise against it. I did, uh, I did, um, talk with my counterparts for Cal, Cal Fire. They did advise, we do need water. Per Public Resource Code forty-two ninety, which is state law, it says fire safety standards for state responsibility areas, um, and lands. Which is them in the high, um, state responsibility area and high fire severity zone. So right here, per the government code, these regulations apply to the perimeters, and access, um, to all residential, commercial, industrial building construction within the state responsibility area. The only way they are exempt is if they built it prior to nineteen ninety-one. And it states you have to have minimum road standards for fire equipment, standards for signs identifying streets, roads and buildings, minimum private water supply, reserves for emergency fire use, in addition to fuel breaks and green belts. Whether they agree with me or not, if they don't want to agree with me, I'd state that we hold off on this project. And, um, check with our counterparts at Cal Fire, uh, Jonathan Pangburn, who is in charge of that area. And, um, we work together on projects, but if he says no tanks, then I'm okay with that. But I highly doubt that he will. And then there's fire, uh, Public Resource Code forty-two ninety-two that talks about fire breaks. There's Public Resource Code forty-two ninety-three that talks about the, um, required clearances, for the access road. And then if there's wires over, and it says they might have an exemption here over less than seventy-five thousand volts, then they don't have to mitigate the wires going up to it. But I don't know what the voltage is on that stuff that's going up there. So. There's a whole slew of things that they have to meet. In order to get this passed. So we could meet with my counterparts with Cal Fire to discuss it and, um, I'd feel more comfortable if we, we talked with them before moving on towards this project.
May I address the meeting, uh, chair?
Yes.
Yes, this, uh, controversy over this condition was brought to my attention, uh, just today and I have not had a chance to research it, although I am generally familiar with the, public responsibility, uh, Public Resources Code provisions that Chief Bedola, has, uh, has referred to. I have not, I did have a brief conversation with the, with an attorney for AT&amp;T and, suggested the alternative condition that, uh, fire suppression, facilities be provided, um, at the, upon the agreement of Cal Fire, the county fire marshal, uh, with the approval of, uh, county council. And, uh, I believe that when we have a chance to review with them, the provisions of the Public Resources Code that will satisfy their concerns. And that, uh, the requirement of a five thousand gallon tank and a, and a hydrant, will, will be able to satisfy them as to the legal requirements for that. So, uh, um, with that modification to condition twenty, um, I would recommend approval.
Through the chair, may I speak?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, should the commission wish to entertain a modified, uh, condition of approval? That sounds like it's subject to negotiation and working out, uh, some reasonable alternative with our public safety officials. That, that, uh, if there's going to be an alternative language that is conditioned, that prior to issuance of, any permit that would disturb ground or begin, you know, appear that we're beginning construction out at the site, that prior to that, that these, uh, these items are, uh, demonstrated on plans and approved. They have, you know, the negotiations or the agreements. But yet there might be other people in the public that wish to speak to this other than just our, our applicant or our owner. I guess what I'm just saying is for condition twenty as it's written or condition twenty as it might be modified, that we're really solid on the, the timing of when we're going to figure out fire safety, for the project. It's, it's not after, it's not right before you power the facility up. It's way before. Thank you.
Through the chair, I would also point out that, um, having the applicant sign, uh, as agreeing to the, conditions of approval is one of the, uh, requirements for, uh, a condition, conditional use permit to be granted. So, uh, before the permit would even be granted, we'd have to have an agreement on the alternative, language as far as, um, the fire suppression facilities is concerned.
So what I'm hearing you say is that, uh, if the conditions of approval, uh, were acceptable, then, uh, it would continue to go on to negotiate or, uh, diminuate the exact terms, exactly what needs to be done?
That's right. Um, it is essentially what we're suggesting is a condition of approval that, has a fire condition that is, subject to further approval and consent by the fire, fire marshal, Cal Fire and county council. And so we'll be working with the applicant to, uh, refine those conditions and to demonstrate the, legal requirement for them. And I fully expect that we'll be able to accomplish that.
Chief Bedola?
Yes.
Can you, uh, weigh in on that? How do you feel about that?
No, as long, uh, we're only asking for one, one tank and one hydrant to protect that, that person's property and the environment in that area, their lifestyle, and life, you know, you can't compromise on life safety. And we're just giving them a bare bones minimum. There's other people or other fire marshals that will require, a lot more water, copious amounts of water, paved road all the way. And I'm not saying that. I'm willing to work with them with that. And I understand that. Um, we just want to make sure we have a bare bones minimum and that's our bare bones minimum that we'll be able to have. So we want to be able to improve the fire safety aspects in that area. Like I said, this is nothing out of the ordinary. Uh, we didn't do any different. We're doing the same thing that we did with the solar project. One tank, one fire hydrant. And that's what we do with normal tiny homes, under three thousand square feet too. So. Uh, we're not asking for above and beyond monitored, fully sprinkled, um, pumps, um, monitored or anything like that. Just one tank.
They currently have seventy-five hundred gallons.
Yeah, but we don't want to take, we don't want to take away from that residence.
Right.
So i- if you were going to go there and we use that, we want to try to avoid from draining the residence, their home use.
And I think that's common.
We want to have as much water. And we're not saying to add additional. Uh, we're not saying to add, a large amount additional, just one extra tank accessible to us on the fire access road. That's all. And the way I see it is we're not asking them to pave it, but make it wide enough because, if you can get a propane gas truck up there, you should be able to get one of our fire engines up there. Is the way we see it. So. If we go to the letter of the law, if you have a certain degrees, a certain slope, they'll make them pave it horizontally grooved. I'm willing to work with them on that part saying, like I said, if you could get a garbage truck or if you could get a propane, truck up there, you should be able to get one of our type three fire engines or type six fire engines to get up there and start firefighting. Plus it's add an additional fire break up there. So adding the roadway will add some breaks also. So it's a win-win for the whole area. Even to help with Pinnacle's.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Maybe we should bring it back next month with all the, the writing and the conditions I've set forth. Before we make an approval or anything. So. I mean, I think bring it and it's not, it's not a big demand. It's pretty, what they're going to spend on attorneys is, is minimum for the water tank costs. I do construction time. It's not an expensive, it's not going to cost. I'll say that will cost maybe four thousand dollars.
If that.
If that. Uh, you know, I'm building homes. So I know what tanks cost.
Absolutely.
And fire hydrants. And it's not, it's not a big thing. I think we should bring it back next month after everything is all written up properly. So there's no, you know, negotiate this much with the fire, Cal Fire on it.
Yeah, like I said, I'm, I'm willing to, to coordinate and, and to talk with my counterparts at Cal Fire just to make sure that, I'm not overstepping myself, which I'm confident that I'm not. But it just reinforces the decisions that we're making on this, that we're not being above and beyond it too hard for the infrastructure. So. Our job is to improve it every project at a time. And this is the way to help improve it a little bit.
And it's a minimum cost.
It's a minimal cost. They, we said no on the repeater. I understand that. And, that's just doing business. I get it. And we just didn't have money to do it for the critical infrastructure ourselves right now. The county or the city.
Did you say that they refused the repeater?
Well, uh, they, they just said it wasn't possible or to be able to get to that, which, which was fine. I mean, it was something they asked. If someone's going to ask something, we're going to ask for it right back. Yeah, give us a fire engine. Yeah, give us a water tender. Yeah, give us a repeater because we, we do have dead spots in there and, we do have a hard time going out there. And this would have helped, for Pinnacle's rescues, Pinnacle's medical aids, um, vehicle accidents in the area and fires in that area. Cause there's dead zones where you're literally not being able to communicate and we're having to drive to other places to, to get the communication. But. Willing to work with them with that. If they didn't want to or they're unable to, I'm not going to strong arm them about that. It would have been a nice, it would have been nice if they would have.
The photographs that you have, uh, submitted, this, that says solar farm entrance Pinoch. Is this on the solar farm?
That's on the solar farm. So that's an example. So if you see on that, they have an address. That's right at the entrance to the solar farm. They have a Knox key switch, which was we're requiring to for the gate. And then there's an example of the, uh, address. And then there's an example of the water tank and a fire hydrant. That's all rest, just like that. Because we understand, that water was limited out there and they're like, we're not going to monitor. They have a small business office there.
Do you know, do you know any, how many gallons a minute their well gets?
Uh, that, I think it was about, forty to sixty GPMs, I want to say, on that one right there. And this one, we're just saying, hey, give us gra- gravity fed if that's the case, but at least we're getting something out of it. We're not asking for fire. But if my counterparts say, we need a minimum GPA, that way it's just not all coming from me. They understand that this is what Cal Fire requires and this is what goes on throughout the state.
If I may, um, uh, chair, the, the attorney for AT&amp;T was, uh, not aware that this was in a state responsibility area and that those legal requirements, were in effect. So, uh, that's a new factor to this discussion. And, uh, and I'm confident that we'll be able to work that out, whether, that's at a future meeting or subject to a condition that allows for us to, to resolve this before the actual, uh, conditional use permit, uh, to begin construction would be issued.
Am I hearing that there's a deadline?
No, I, I'm not suggesting there is a deadline. I'm suggesting that, that that's something that we should be able to do, in a, in a very short order. It's just, I couldn't do it today.
Got it.
Given the other, the other, um, duties that I had to attend to today.
Commissioners, yes?
But protest, I mean, to let it for next month, not going to do anything, no harm. There's no harm done.
That, that's in the discretion of the commission, whether or not to, approve that with that alternate language that the applicant has said they've agreed to and that, that I think is acceptable to Chief Bedola as well. That I recommended to AT&amp;T's attorney today. But if you want to continue it for us to finalize that language, that's entirely up to the discretion of the board.
Commissioners, I'm looking at your pictures up here.
Yep. Through the chair though, I, I do see that, uh, we have a member of the public that's raised their hand. Maybe it's a property owner. But if you wanted to poll the commissioners before taking public testimony, that's, uh, your prerogative. Uh, what's your wish?
No, we'll take the public testimony.
Well, more than one now. There's two, two people that have raised their hands. Uh, RL and Dulce, are you going to help unmute those speakers?
Yes, I will do that. So, uh, first speaker, I am, um, you have been unmuted. Please state your first and last name for the record. Uh, you will be given three minutes. Go, go ahead.
This is actually Sarah King, the applicant again. Uh, and what I wanted to say is number one, this is, not a small ask. And the reason being is that yes, the tank itself is only about two to four thousand dollars. But you're talking the installation costs of this, the staff that are required to install it, if they need to install a foundation. You're talking water trucks to go up and fill it. And you're talking the expense of future maintenance, which is the tank will need to be maintained and it will need to be filled on a semi fairly, a, a decent regular basis because I'm assuming that it will suffer from at least some basic, evaporative effects, especially on a very sunny, open hillside like this is. So it will need regular maintenance. So you're talking an expense well into AT&amp;T's future. And that's where we are concerned with the, we aren't in the business of ser- of being a water supplier. We are in the business of being a telecommunications supplier. In addition, this, the asks have yet to cite code. I understand the forty-two ninety requirements. Those requirements are, as I've read them, are fairly general. They ask for water to be supplied, but they certainly don't ask for five thousand gallons and they don't ask for these high expectations. And that's where my real concern is with the expectations that we were being placed to. Is that we have yet to see code being cited that actually applies to a commercial unmanned facility like our own. Instead, we're being held to standards for, a different type of structure. Uh, and that we see as a real problem. We, we would be happy to comply if, someone brings it to us a code compliance or code list that states, these are the requirements and they apply to your project. However, I feel like we're being asked to, ensure standards that do not apply to our project.
Through the chair?
Yes. Mr. Roberts, is that you I hear?
Yes. Uh, I, I just had a, a question for Mr. But Chief Bedola. The, the, does the tank have to be up by the structure? Or can it be down by the house closer to the fire road so that there isn't this vast expense, to pipe it and install it? You could just drop the tank on the ground and put a pipe from the existing water storage to the new tank.
Am I off mute by any chance?
No, you're still on.
Okay. Uh, my apologies, but I'd just like to jump in there because moving the tank won't really solve the fact that you've got to hire water trucks and you've got to.
Through the chair, the, the commissioner's question was to, uh, the fire chief. We've already heard from our applicant. It's, it's, um, Ms. King, it's, uh, the commissioner directed his question to the fire chief.
My apologies.
And I, I was expecting to be filled from the same source as the existing tank. And that there wouldn't need to be a lot of extra infrastructure to fill a new tank if it could be set up, in the same proximity as the, the tank that serves the residence. I'm asking the chief if that's possible.
And, and that's absolutely our intent, uh, was to connect it and give additional, uh, tank on their water supply. And if it's too crowded there, they could run an additional, uh, tank down to a more accessible area, but add to theirs. I'm not asking them to, have a standalone tank and to fill it up. Um, it could be connected to the well. They could place it somewhere else that's gravity filled. That way when it does go low, it does get filled up. So, yeah, you're absolutely right. It's, I'm not asking them to run it to the roadway where a lot of the requirements say you have to run it to the roadway. I'm not asking for them to put it, at the top of the hill and have a pump that pump it up on the hill either. It's just one tank additional to that. It'll help supplement the residence and it'll. and it'll help increase our firefighting capability. So there would, there would be no need to go and continue to fill it up with water. I mean, for the public resource codes, they do have stuff that they do have to maintain, like the roadways and the electrical clearance and all that stuff, so they should be more concerned about that stuff, the weed abatement, rather than the tank that should be filling up on its own, and this is just...
It's not standing.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
It sounds like there's a misunderstanding of what is being asked as far as the extra water tank, that it isn't, you're not asking it to be pumped to the top of the hill with an additional tank at the top of the hill. So I think that during the negotiations that we're probably going to have, that can be worked out, as well as perhaps a discussion of the repeater. But we still have other public comment to ask for, so I will wait. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any further public comment?
So, next speaker, go ahead and state your first and last name for the record, and you will be given three minutes.
Okay, good evening, my name is Betty Saxton, and I am with AT&amp;T External Affairs, and I have responsibility for San Benito County on behalf of AT&amp;T. And I'm not going to debate the issue concerning the water tower, I think you know our position on that, but what I do want to say to the commissioners is that this tower is really very important. It's a new site built, it's gonna fill a significant gap that your county is already experiencing. It will also be equipped with FirstNet. And FirstNet is that portion of the network that all of the first responders are onto. CalFire is on FirstNet, the CHP is on FirstNet, California OES is on FirstNet. So I'm just asking that perhaps we can look at some other alternative to this one particular section, and that we move forward with a vote and allow us to build this new site. Not only for the first responders, but also for your community. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there further comments?
If, if you wish to make a comment, press the hand icon if you're on the phone at star nine.
And just so you know, we do understand, but this was per Cal Fire, that's critical infrastructure. We wanna be able to protect it, that's why we want the water there. That was per Cal Fire. They said if they don't have the water, then don't do the project. That was Cal Fire, that wasn't me, they were that stern.
I have been attending the Fire Safe Council meetings for some time now, and the amateur radio operators, so I know how vital it is for us to be able to communicate in South County, and how many blind spots there are, and that any time that there is some kind of a project coming up, that this is the type of thing that we need to ask for to protect our citizenship, our citizens, as well as their well-being, the project, and all the future operations that go on down there. When it comes to our first responders, this is the least we can do, is to have the best possible situation provided to them, and if we're not asking for that, in my opinion, is irresponsible. So I'm feeling that there has to be a good resolution.
Perfect, thank you, and like I said, the AHJ does have jurisdiction, so we can't just say, this is what we want, this is what you have to do per the AHJ, and I'm willing to go out and work with my counterparts to work with them and say, okay, what is it that we would like out there? I'm not just gonna say it on behalf of myself or the Hollister Fire Department. I'm working with Cal Fire, San Benito County Fire, and Hollister Fire.
Thank you.
Hey, through the chair, I'm not seeing that there's any additional public speakers. If you wanted to take an action or move on from there to commissioner discussion, at your direction, please.
Thank you. I would like to clarify one thing, that the representative from AT&amp;T, was I hearing from her also that there is an imperative to get started immediately? Not, okay, that's confirming, thank you. Commissioners, do we have comments? Anyone?
I think, I would like to make a motion.
Mr. Rodriguez?
I'd like to make a motion and bring it back next month, fully, conditions all written up.
Do I hear a second?
Accept the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 It is unanimous, I believe?
Yes.
So let's just clarify that, that next planning commission hearing date that this has been continued to is... May twenty, that's the third Wednesday in May. There'll be no additional public notice, and the expectations are for staff and the public safety officials to work with our client, AT&amp;T, here to work out clarified language for fire suppression that meets public safety needs as well as the needs of AT&amp;T. I think that captured the motion?
Thank you very much.
Sure. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does that, does that finish the issue?
Yeah.
Okay, good. I don't, I don't have a proper agenda sitting in front of me, this is what's making it very confusing.
All right, through the chair, I believe that, that planning commission item has now been completed with the motion to continue accepted five to zero for May twentieth, and we're on to the presentation from Richard Felsing regarding a, we've had fun with the name, regarding a Dam Winery Proposal, and when Mr. Felsing is all queued up, please, please begin.
Thank you, Taman.
Almost there. This is driving me...
And if I could ask, I found the first presenter voice a little weak, and so let's, Mr. Felsing, let's just assure that you've got a robust presence in front of that microphone as you give your presentation this evening.
Ah, thank you. How's the sound volume, Taman? Is that good?
Sounds pretty good, although I'm gonna suggest maybe we get some of that Muzak interim, fill-in-the-gaps kind of music happening between things while we're setting up there.
All right. Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Commissioners, good evening. We bring before you a use permit proposal, PLN nineteen zero zero fifty-five, in which Adam and Kristin Dam as applicants propose a winery and wine tasting room on a five-acre parcel under their ownership at thirty twenty-eight Siena Ga Road.
Mr. Felsing?
Yes, sir.
If I could ask for your technical button pushing, so that you could share the PowerPoint on your screen?
I'm seeing the PowerPoint up on everybody's screen here, but maybe, maybe the share didn't take root.
It's a bit challenging, all of this.
There we go. Yeah, and hit the presentation mode, there we go, good job.
Yep. There we go, all right. Okay, so Adam and Kristin Dam as applicants propose a winery and wine tasting room on a five-acre parcel that you see here, right there, under their ownership at thirty twenty-eight Siena Ga Road. County ordinance allows agricultural processing facilities and permanent stands for the sale of agricultural products with a conditional use permit under AP zoning. Here we can see the parcel in question in context. It's got easy access off of Union Road through Siena Ga, and rather than taking the bypass, which is at the head of the wine hospitality area, you'd go through Old Siena Ga and access a driveway to reach the site of the existing forty-five hundred square foot metal building. Need to advance this. There we go, the arrow wasn't working there for a second. So here you can see the project in relation to the wine hospitality area, and Siena comes down through here and loops along. So what we write as, right at the head of the area there, or just before that gateway, here's the parcel in close-up aerial view, and this would be the access driveway to reach the site. Again, we're... Now, the project does conform to the general plan, which has goals and policies to expand and support the county's wine industry, and it's consistent with the zoning, which again, allows for agricultural processing, the winery and the wine tasting room, or for, it allows a permanent sale of agricultural products with conditional use permit, as mentioned. This is the existing metal building, and you see the exterior patio area off to the right with some awnings and entrances and the twelve, parking for about twelve stalls there. Now, the applicants have applied, or will be applying for a type-two wine grower license and a type-twenty-three small beer manufacturer license from ABC Alcohol Beverage Control Board. The main activity would be the vineyard with the winery. They'll be making the wine from the grapes off the eleven-acre family-owned parcels adjacent to the five-acre parcel, and the plan to use a one-barrel turnkey system at one to two barrels per week at most, you know, about a hundred and four barrels per year proposed. So they're gonna start small and then grow the operation as demand warrants or interest suggests. So they have proposed, as initial, outlined some standard hours with a little bit of, plan to run the processing function a little bit later at harvest or peak times, and there may be less activity as far as that goes later. But they have committed to have an owner-operator onsite at all times the facility's open, and, you know, they've also proposed some standard features for the use permit, including twelve stalls for parking, ADA-accessible porta-potties or interior restrooms, and about six, six or eight tables inside and outside, and ABC is fine with that arrangement. And perhaps small speakers, soft music, background music, and dimmable string lighting for the exterior patio. Now, they are, would like to make it available for meetings of the Boy Scouts, they've all got small kids, as far as I understand, or nonprofits. So there's some items to note for this project, and so food service is one of those. The ABC license is, is fine with, with or without food service, but they just mentioned that there would be no selling of other wineries' products or breweries' products unless they had real food onsite, and this is a land use permit for the winery and the retail sales, but it's not a food service use permit. That would be permitted a food truck, for example, which they would like to have onsite, a temporary food facility in the environmental health language terminology. County environmental health would have to permit any beverages sold or provided onsite, including bottled water and possibly drinking water, but the applicants have committed, and the environmental health would require them to go through that process and just get any kind of food service permitted, and it would be handled by the county. This is the patio area looking north there and towards their vineyard, so it's a kind of a nice shaded outdoor area. Now, there are some items to note, aside from the potential events, there should be some growth, and the food service would be permitted by environmental health. So the applicants are gonna need to meet Title twenty-two water quality and quantity standards, and make sure the road, the access, the fire access road really meets fire design standards. And so Charlie Padola and the Fire Marshal will also be doing an occupancy clearance inspection once they're ready to go, to make sure that their final layout and version is sufficiently in compliance with the fire code. And the other thing is, is just that, since it's on Old Siena Ga and using an access road, we are requiring standard wayfinding or signage, subject to the approval of the county engineer, who, Roger Grimsley is very familiar with the area. So all of that said, staff recommends the use permit, PLN nineteen zero zero fifty-five approval with draft resolutions and findings and standard and special conditions of approval. Thank you.
Well, great, thank you very much, Mr. Felsing. Would we, do we, I think it'd be great to hear from our applicants at this point, should they wish to speak. Anybody from the Dam family?
Watch your language.
Adam Dam, you have been unmuted, and if you could please state your first and last name for the record.
Hey, Commissioners, this is Adam Dam. Yeah, we'd really like to consider this project. We've been out here for about twenty-five years, and we planted this vineyard and this little niche agricultural tourism, we think would really benefit the county. It sounds like we met all the requirements set by everybody, and so we, yeah, thank you, guys. And I did wanna touch on the food trucks, as Richard touched on that, I don't know if anybody has any concerns on that, having a temporary food facility, but it sounds like that's just gonna go through environmental, environmental health events. You know, we'd like to have, it's in the, it's in the draft to have events out there, private and public. Mainly, we would like to have events that are gonna promote this facility, you know, promote the wine, et cetera. Also, and also open it to private events, it's a, it's a smaller facility, so I would see private events not being too big, but that would be set by, I'm sure, Mr. Chief Padola, as well as the vineyard, if folks wanted to do something in the vineyard, as far as a private event goes or public event. Yeah, that's about it, I appreciate everything. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Yes, I had, I'll ask the Commissioners if they had any questions from you first.
Not from you.
Anybody?
No, not at this time.
Adam, am I understanding that in, in winery, is there normally anyway a commercial kitchen? Is a commercial kitchen required for bottling wine and things like that? Are you there, Adam?
No, yeah, to my knowledge, a commercial kitchen is not, will adhere to all the environmental health standards. But no, as far as I know, you know, you're not, you might need a three-basin sink or something of that nature. But again, set by, set by those folks. Yeah.
Okay, that was just, it was just a curiosity.
If I may, I think that, sorry, if I may, that might be, they might need to have...
If I may, I think that, sorry, if I may, that might be, they might need to have, for sanitary reasons, to be able to wash hands, wash dishes, wash all that other stuff that they use out there. So that's where they might have to work with the environmental health, through that stuff right there. He did come to me, he did ask about stuff, so there is no change of use or change of occupancy from what it was before, because it's already a commercial business out there. Although Adam did state that he is going to improve the water, he is going to add a tank, he is going to add an additional hydrant, plus he was going to go ahead and add additional doors to have our two exits in there with the proper exiting and lighting, just planning for the future. But he's, he was willing to, he's the one that brought that to us, so we're real happy with working with him on that project.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the Commissioners or any further comments from the public?
Next speaker, you have been unmuted. Please state your first and last name for the record, and you will be given three minutes to speak.
Ian Hudson. Any bottling on the facility, winemaker for the facility? The bottling on the facility currently would be done by a mobile bottling line, which doesn't require, I mean, it's outside of our facility. The facility has three basin sinks, but there's no plans currently for a bottling line currently. So most, most small wineries use a mobile bottling line to bring in, which are sterilized by steam machines, and it's pretty common practice.
Yes, I'd forgotten that. Was that your comment, sir? Is that done?
Yeah, that's it.
Any further comment? Ariel?
No, no, no.
No, there is no further comment.
Thank you. I'll bring it back to the Commissioners.
I have no comments.
Any comments? Discussion?
I'd like to picture that.
Oh, I'm watching that little screen down there. Mr. Gibson?
Over, I think you're on mute still.
Anyone? No, you shouldn't be on mute.
I'm on mute. That's funny.
Well, we hear you. Right. Oh, there he is.
I move that we adopt Resolution Number 2020 next, a resolution of the San Benito County Planning Commission approving PLN 190055, a use permit for a wine tasting room and winery at 2038 Sianega Road, with findings and conditions.
I second that motion?
Good song.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I think Navarro's still muted.
No, I heard him.
No, he's not.
Aye.
Right. Thank you. It seems like we have...
Thank you, Madam Chair. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you for acting on the use permit. And with that, we'll transition to the next presentation from Jamila Saka regarding the housing element. Unless there's any, anything else, Madam Chair, you wish to speak about between items?
Are there, are there any concerns in the commission that we should speak about at the moment? We're good?
Well, nothing's, nothing's agendized, that's for sure.
Right. And we've got Commissioner comments at the end of the meeting. Thank you. Jamila?
Hi, good evening, Planning Commissioners, staff, and people of the public as well. Before I begin, I really just want to say a great thank you to the staff that have been able to put this meeting together. It really means a lot to me, just to be able to come into the meeting and already be prepared and have it all ready together. So really great. Thank you, guys, and thank you for all being flexible tonight, too. So I am going to be discussing...
Jamila?
Yes.
We're having a tough time hearing you. You're kind of breaking up a little bit. So I don't know if you can move a bit closer to the microphone or pick a little bit louder?
Okay, thank you. Is that better? Is that better now? Okay. Thank you. I feel like I'm yelling. Sorry. Tonight, I will be discussing the annual housing element progress report. This report is submitted annually, and it indicates all the activity completed for a jurisdiction within the previous year. It's submitted April 1st of every year to the State Housing Community Development and the Governor's Office of Planning and Research. So it was submitted in April 1st of 2020, again for all items conducted in 2019 for San Benito County. As a reminder, with our housing element progress report and our housing element, that is one item or one section of our entire general plan. So this is something that is reported on, again, annually, but it's something as part of our major component of the general plan, which has been mentioned a couple of times tonight. A couple of things that I want to go over, and if there's any questions, please feel free to, to say them as well. Sorry. With our annual housing element progress report, you have seen, if you've looked at some from a couple of years ago, it is a little bit more intricate. So in the past, the county would just put in the number of approved or completed building permits and then submit that to the state. Now, what the state wants to see is a whole, basically bird's eye view of everything that a jurisdiction's doing. So in the report now, we indicate any applications, entitlements, building permits, approved building permits, anything that is deed restricted, and then what type of income levels those follow as well. So you will see now in future reports that it's a little bit more exhaustive, takes a little bit more time, but I think that's really smart for the state to do that, because then they'll be able to track and see what, as a jurisdiction, are we going to do in the future, and what are we doing now as well. In the report, you will see that there has been an increase in the number of building permits and completed building permits. In the past, it may be below 50. Now you're seeing an average of over 200, which really just indicates the number of approved projects that we have, but then also completed building permits as well. Currently, right now, in what was submitted in the report, is there has been no addition to the number of units for very low and low income. I will discuss that in a moment of some future projects. And then at this point, we have only approved four moderate units for that specific income level. In addition, we have met and exceeded our expectation for above moderate income. So at this time, we have approved and completed 505 above moderate units. Comparatively, I would like to indicate, pat ourselves on the shoulders, that compared to a lot of our other surrounding jurisdictions, we are actually farther along in our expectations and meeting our housing unit goals. So as you can remember, the short-term RENA, or the Regional Housing Needs Allocation, is something that we have to set by and reach those goals. So compared to some of our other jurisdictions, we're actually farther along, which I think is something to note as well. And then with our future projects, not just looking at future projects, but also in part of the housing element, there are specific programs of implementation. So we have goals and policies and procedures that we want to implement within our housing element. So it's not always necessarily just about the housing units or what we are building. So a couple of items that are in the housing element, one being the Affordable Housing Ordinance, and discussing that. So as some of you may know, and actually, we have two of our Planning Commissioners who are part of our Affordable Housing Ad-Hoc Committee. So we've been meeting since about the summertime, discussing specific goals of what we want to amend to our ordinance, and specifically, right now, we are working with a consultant to be able to complete a feasibility study. So the feasibility study would be part two our Affordable Housing Ordinance and determining what a feasible in lieu fee would be for projects if approved to pay a fee instead of providing the affordable units. The next thing, or implementation in part of the housing element, is annual monitoring. And so that's where part of my role comes into play when it comes with the housing element. We do have a number of affordable housing units that have certain deed restrictions and certain requirements. So we do do an annual check to, one, ensure that the individuals who own the home are keeping it as their primary residence, as that is part of the deed restriction, but also maintaining their home as well. One part of the housing element, which I wanted to kind of discuss or just bring attention to, that was one of the goals that we have not quite achieved or discussed yet, is mobile, mobile parks or mobile home parks, and having different areas zoned for that, or being able to, to expand areas for mobile home parks. That's one of the goals, but we have not quite achieved that yet. Also, in turn, though, it's not necessarily, it is captured now in the new progress report, but thinking about future projects. And so one project that I really want to highlight, which will, in the future, when completed, will be added to our very low and low section, is our River View Two project. So that was approved for 24 single-family homes, both of very low and low income, so that will be included in our RENA allocation. I think it's a really great project. Again, it's a local organization that is leading the project. So it's the Local Community Services Development Corporation that is the project applicant. So I think it's really great that we're having local resources, along with just kind of thinking in the future and being able to know what's kind of coming down the line when it comes to our planning department, is we do have two future grants that are going to be due in the next couple of months. So we might be discussing some of the things with the Planning Commissioners and among staff as well. One of them to look into is called LEAP, the Local Early Action Plan. That is a non-competitive, one-time grant funding. Because we are a smaller county, unfortunately, we are only eligible to about $65,000. But one of the eligible activities that we've been discussing and using the funding for is being able to use the funding towards updating our housing element. So our current housing element is through 2023, so in the next couple of years, we will need to start updating that and working with the consultant group and staff to have something updated for our next portion of the general plan. The grant application is due July 1st of this year, and we will hopefully be bringing that attention to the board as well. The next one is called PHLA, and that has to do a little bit more with, and it can be a little bit complicated, I'm not going to lie. They just kind of released it, and I've done a few webinars and trying to get up to date. I'm like, okay, we got this. Again, this is a one, a one-time, non-competitive grant. It's a little bit more involved. So it will take a little bit more of staff attention, working with our Board of Supervisors, and working with other organizations within the county as well. So what the grant is, is again, kind of similar to the SB2 funding, which we've talked about before, this is the second year round of funding. So it is something from, that gets collected from the Recorder's Office and gets dispersed to different planning jurisdictions, and with that, it's a five-year plan. So what the grant application is expecting us as staff is to decide, they do have certain eligible types of funding uses for it, one being rental assistance, down payment assistance, using funding for emergency shelters. But what the state wants to see is a five-year plan. So we, in part of the application, will need to decide and create, how do we anticipate to be using the funding? The first year expected funding is about 120,000, and overall, in the next five years, the state anticipates San Benito County to be eligible to about 730,000. So the application is expected to show a five-year plan, not just what we will use in that first year. But I think it's really important that we're thoughtful and making sure that, you know, this is money that we can use for certain things. So as staff, we will probably, one, be working together as staff, but also reaching out and seeing what our community needs, because that's funding that's going directly to us. We just need to apply for it. And that grant application is due July 27th of this year. And the next thing that I just kind of want to bring attention to our Planning Commission is the importance of this annual housing element progress report. It is due every single year, and one thing that staff has noticed with a lot of these grant applications is it's one of the threshold requirements. A, you have an approved housing element. So again, come 2023, we need to make sure that we have an approved housing element, approved by the Housing Community Development Agency, approved by the state, and then second, having completed and submitted that annual progress report. So those are some thresholds that we've seen for future grants. So just wanting to let you know that one, staff is making sure that we're following the state guidelines, turning that information in so that we can be able to continue funding and receive resources for San Benito County. So that concludes my report. I don't know if there's any questions, comments, or direction for staff, but I'm definitely here to, to assist. Yes.
Is this the PHLA, was that the second year SB2, or is this a third, like an addition?
This will be the second year of SB2. So I'm forgetting the percentages at this time, but they've broken it up to assist with homelessness actions, and then now assisting actual specific jurisdictions. But you do have to be a little bit more specific on how you want to use the funding. For the first wave, and that was the one that we were approved for with SB2 planning grants of 160,000, where we decided to use the funding for updating county ordinances and having those accessory dwelling unit site plans. The second one is like, okay, we've given you the foundation to, to update your ordinances. Now we want to see the action. So this kind of second year is kind of more based on action, if that makes sense.
And then the action can go for five years?
Yes. So the entire plan, they have concluded, so they've collected all the funding for 2019, and that's how we've estimated what we will receive for the first year of about 120,000. But the plan and the grant application wants you to create a plan for five years. So not just necessarily, okay, the first year, we're going to use 120 for this. Oh, the second year, well, we'll use it for this. No, they actually want you to show what are you going to do it, or what you're going to use the money for. If you do have to make amendments, you do have to get them approved by the state as well, amendments to your plan.
Not an easy task.
Yeah. So that's why I was saying, we really do need, I really want to be thoughtful in making sure that what we can use the funding will go towards something specific, but that is, yeah, exactly. We will have to make amendments, because that might be kind of hard.
Commissioners, any comments, questions?
Jamila, the only question I had was really regarding the, the ad hoc committee, and we were working with a consultant on the fees, and we didn't have a meeting last month. I'm not sure when the next meeting is. But can you give us an update just in terms of where that consultant is with that, that proposal and kind of next steps? I mean, I'm not sure when we're going to be meeting again on that.
Yes, thank you for that. So I have spoken with, sorry, I'm honestly not sure where to look. There's so many screens. It's also on CMAP. I'm just not sure right now. So I did speak with the RMA Director, and at this time, with ad hoc committees potentially not being an essential item right now, we may have to delay meeting. Right now, staff is reviewing the affordable gap analysis. So Marion, the consultant, did complete the first task of, or completing the affordable gap analysis. So that right now is being reviewed by staff, and then we will share it with the ad hoc committee for your questions, your comments. I will, can send that back to our consultant. She can make some edits. With the report that you will see and that I will provide, once staff has had their time to review, is you will see that we've given a couple options. And you'll see, as I continue, in terms of using some city data or using some more county data. So hopefully we can be able to meet potentially in May. Again, I'm not sure how the shelter in place will be working in May. I'm really hoping we can be able to meet in May, but if not before, then you will receive the report via email.
At a minimum, if we can just keep the project moving along, and if there is a draft that we can review in the interim, I think that would be helpful for both me and Commissioner Dixon and everyone else on the ad hoc committee. That way, we can, we can review it, add comments and questions to it, and make sure we're not slowing down the process in this, in this time.
I definitely agree with you. Thank you for bringing that up.
The same would go with the, the other ordinance that we're working on, that you were going to have a consultant come on board and get that updated, the ADU ordinance?
Yes. Right now, we are working on the... Right now, we are working on the request for proposal, so the RFP, to be able to kind of, hopefully, just have it all done altogether. So not just update our county ordinances, but also be able to update the ADU or have those approved site plans. So last time I checked, I apologize, I don't have my email in front of me, and I can confirm, but I believe it was just being reviewed by county council at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Eggers and Mr. Gibson, for all the work you did with the ad hoc committee and Jamila, and I think it is essential to keep, keep the ball rolling. Otherwise, when we come out of this, it's, we're not going to have the needed information and collaborations set in place and, and ready to roll. So, yeah, I applaud your effort. Thank you. And especially keeping the Commissioners in.
Through the chair, I have, I have a little to add, just not much, but a little. Is that okay, Chair?
That's your red card.
Here's my red card. I just wanted to say that I've been working on some of the budget numbers and the budget requests with other folks back at administration, and I did request a half-time equivalent staff person to help us with the housing element implementation and the updates that we're gonna, that are going to be funded through the grants. So I just kind of wanted the administrators to be thinking of it, and not necessarily just the outside consultant, but maybe it's a person that is, you know, funded, that's on staff, and so that, that would complement the, the work and activities that Jamila is doing.
Sounds fantastic.
I have nothing further to add. Through the chair, Jamila, anything?
Nothing else. If you think of anything or any other suggestions or comments, feel free to email me at this time. I am working, so I can always be of assistance, but just thank you all again, and I appreciate all your work. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamila.
Thank you. Chair, will you entertain a motion to adjourn?
No, Mr. Gibson. We have, we have comments, updates from any Commissioners?
Uh.
Anybody?
Nothing from me.
Very good. Then I would entertain a motion to exit stage lift.
I move to adjourn this meeting.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Good to see everybody. Yep.
Good to hear.
Stay safe. Take care and stay safe.
Be safe, absolutely.
And healthy.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Council.
Goodbye.
The company thing.